Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County Board of Commissioners, April the 7th Board of Commissioners Meeting. I call the meeting to order. And at this time, I'd like to ask the Reverend Spotswood Graves if he would lead us in an invocation. Spotswood, it's about time. It's been about a year, hasn't it?
Yes, welcome back.
And it's a pleasure to have the ministry back before us, live and kicking.
It's my pleasure to be here, sir, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to lead you in prayer. I speak for my fellow ministers when I say giving us the opportunity. Let us pray. Oh God, generous and long-suffering. We are grateful that we can be here. We're grateful for those who have worked to learn about pandemics, who have devoted their working life to discover the nature of disease and to help protect us from it. We pray for all to do their part, that our society, that our community might once again become safe from disease. As we meet in this place, we give you thanks for government, for representatives, those representatives here who give their interests, their time to provide for our common good. We thank you for the challenge of elections, that we have the opportunity to decide those who would lead us. We give you thanks for schools in our community, for being in a community where education is for all, not just for the wealthy. And we thank you for teachers and school administrators, who are and have been faithful in their duty of providing for students in these challenging times. We pray for students, particularly those in struggle using these new ways of teaching and learning. We lift up the sick among us, of those who are suffering from COVID and those who continue to live with the lingering effects of COVID. We pray also for those who mourn, for the deaths of, mourn the deaths of family and of close friends. We pray for those who mourn that they have not been able to visit with those whom they love, whom they give care. We pray for those who mourn the injustices among us, the injustice of advantage given to all with white skin, for those who mourn sons and daughters in danger from drugs, from guns, from abuse. We would lift up all members of law enforcement who place themselves in harm's way daily. We pray also that they would be protected from the abuse of their power. On this day, on this week, we pray for the people of Minneapolis, as they wrestle with the nature of law enforcement and those who would serve in law enforcement among them. We pray for those who must decide in such matters. Give hope and strength to each who seeks to make a difference in the world. Bring encouragement and love. We give you thanks for those whom we recognize this day for long years of service to our And indeed, we thank you for all who serve Dare County and the public good. Ever hold before us your directive that we love our enemies. Continue to use our differences to show us the just society that you envision. Meet with us each one in our personal struggles and use the private prayers we make for those we love, for those whose needs we know, and even for those who push our buttons, for those who remind us that there is much growth that you would wish for us and for all. Thank you that you neither slumber nor sleep, and that your eyes never grow weary of watching over your creation. To you we make our prayer. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Spotswoods, for those inspiring words. Always a pleasure to have you here and make your comments. Thank you. May we stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present, with the exception of Commissioner Ross. He's out of town. And please keep in his wife and your thoughts and prayers. County Manager, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, sir. Got a few things to go over this morning. First being, our board on Wednesday, March the 23rd, held a board retreat, lasted a little bit longer than we anticipated. But we really, really had a great meeting with the county manager and to give him direction himself and our finance director, David Clausen, and his department heads our direction for the coming year. And we look forward to hearing back from the county manager fairly soon, maybe this month, first part of May, with our moving forward with our budget. And I want to thank my fellow commissioners. That was really a good workshop, and we had a lot of good stuff take place in that workshop. And I look forward to the county manager coming back to us with the budget. So another great opportunity for us, we had to postpone the SPCA ribbon-cutting ceremony due to weather, but we held it on March the 31st. And wow, somebody was looking after us because what a gorgeous day that was. Just another hats off to this board, another beautiful facility that this board approved being built. And we all took really, really good tours of that facility on the 31st. And it's going to be a huge asset to Dare County. And I want to personally thank this board once again for stepping up to the plate. And also Commissioner Ross, he spearheaded this. This is state-of-the-art facility, folks. So if you haven't had a chance, please go over to the SPCA and take a tour and adopt an animal, right, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Because they got some, they got quite a few pets over there that are waiting to have homes. And so if you have an opportunity, go over there. Also, on March the 31st, we had a 5-on-5 meeting with our Dare County Board of Education. That 5-on-5 is, myself is chair, their chair, their, our county manager, their superintendent, our finance director, David Clausen, their finance director, and two of their commissioners. And we talked about, once again, moving forward with their budget and their needs. And that was another really, really good meeting between the two groups. And we look forward to finalizing that very, very soon. It was brought to my attention, and it really didn't have to be brought to my attention, but we live in quite a different world today, folks. Reverend Spotswood Graves mentioned this in his invocation, that our country is in need of prayer. Dare County Board of Commissioners stands for, I want to put this on the record, stands for inclusion and kindness amongst all citizens. We've seen these recent hate crimes and violence towards all Americans, all nationalities throughout our country. And this board certainly, in Dare County, will certainly not tolerate it. And we stand behind all of our citizens, no matter what race, color, religion. I encourage you, I encourage you to pray for our country because we're in dire need of making sure everyone is treated with the utmost respect. This morning, I'd like to mention those of you who are sitting here, I'm not sure, you certainly can't see it on the monitor, but maybe our technical folks cannot focus on me talking right now and kind of scroll down in front of the podium here. But there's Heron Pond Monastery and the All Saints School did this banner for us. And it's a thank you. And it's thanking this board for once again stepping up to the plate and establishing the COVID daycare grant program. So the kids made this for us, and we've posted this banner up here. And Matt, thank you for displaying that and showing this on the screen. And the board wants to certainly thank the Heron Pond Monastery and the All Saints School for doing this. And we were happy to, happy to do this. This was certainly something well-needed throughout our community. And we are very, very excited to have been able to provide that grant for these folks. And then last, certainly last but not least, I'm not sure if, let me find my paperwork here, if, is Mr. Clausen, is he in? Mr. Clausen's here. Thank you, Mr. Clausen, for bringing this to my attention recently. And I have a resolution that Mr. Clausen brought to my, to me and asked if this board would consider it. It's a resolution thanking the citizens and businesses and county employees for their help during the pandemic and declaring thanks out of banks, a week of gratitude. And I've put a copy up here for each and every one of my fellow commissioners. And County Manager, would you read that resolution for this board?
Sure. This is a resolution thanking citizens, businesses, and county employees for their help during the pandemic and declaring thanks outer banks, a week of gratitude. Whereas the Outer Banks has a 434-year history of resilience and strength, coupled with a powerful sense of community. And whereas the world has suffered a horrible pandemic with over 500,000 people dying from COVID-19 in the United States alone. And whereas Dare County has not been spared the ravages of the pandemic to our personal health, our personal lives, our lifestyles, or our economy. And whereas vaccines are now being provided that give us hope for our future health and well-being. And whereas the Outer Banks has pulled through together, from families to first responders to frontline workers to medical facilities, with courage, compassion, and strength to get past the worst of the pandemic. Now therefore be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners does hereby declare May 9th through 15th, 2021, as thank you, Outer Banks, a week of gratitude, and urges all citizens and businesses to participate and show their gratitude. And be it further resolved that county officials and employees are encouraged to support the efforts of thanks Outer Banks, showing the county's gratitude to our employees and our citizens. This the third day of May 2021.
Pleasure of the board. We'll move to approve. Okay, there's a motion on, there's a motion on the board by Commissioner House, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman to adopt this resolution for the thanks Outer Banks for the week of May 9th through the 15th, 2021. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes like sound? Motion carries unanimous. Carl, Ms. Clausen, thank you for drafting that resolution for us, bringing that to our attention, and we very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's from the Rotary Club of Dare County and from the Outer Banks.
Carl, come on up to the, we want the folks to be able to hear you, Carl.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, a little too casual, I guess. This is brought to you from the Rotary Clubs of the Outer Banks, Manio, Kitty Hawk, and First Flight, and from the Outer Banks Hospital and Medical Group, just working together to say, it's time to be positive. Things are looking good. Thanks to the retail workers, to the guys who drive the septic trucks, to whoever helped you get through the past year, just as a time just to say thanks. And we appreciate you adopting the resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Well done, my friend. Well done. Awesome. Thank you. County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, I had a note on here about a video. Did you have a video to show now?
Yeah, with regard to the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize. We'll go back to the Monastery banner that I had up here, and I forgot that we do have a video we'd certainly like to share with the public and those of you who are here now.
When the COVID-19 pandemic struck the Outer Banks in the spring of 2020, it posed a series of challenges to more than just the health and well-being of those who contracted the virus. With many businesses closing their doors to adhere to the regulations, and many parents temporarily out of the workforce, or forced to work from home and no longer needing daycare providers to care for their children during the workday. When the COVID-19 pandemic struck the Outer Banks in the spring of 2020, it posed a series of challenges to more than just the health and well-being of those who contracted the virus. With many businesses closing their doors to adhere to the regulations, and many parents temporarily out of the workforce, or forced to work from home and no longer needing daycare providers to care for their children during the workday, daycare facilities throughout Dare County were suddenly filled with vacancies.
When COVID happened, the center, we struggled with enrollment, and we struggled with staffing. Ultimately, we had to close for a few months, which we've never had to do, obviously. And we were finally able to reopen. And then upon reopening, we still are struggling with the same, you know, the same types of things, staffing, enrollment.
Because of these struggles, many Dare County daycares were standing at the brink of being forced to shut down their facilities for good.
One of the biggest concerns with the COVID pandemic that affected all of us, with our enrollment being so low, was if it continued without any kind of community health and support, it would have been so awful to not be able to be open and not be able to stay open and lose all these childcare and Monastery School spots and have to let all those employees go. It just would have been so tragic.
This not only had a devastating effect on the daycare providers, but also on the many parents who found themselves having to choose between the developmental health and well-being of their children and the demands of their work and daily responsibilities.
When the pandemic started, I think all parents in Dare County realized we were really going to be in a bind. There's so much we rely on our childcare centers for, socialization, consistency, all sorts of those things. And when it hit and doors closed across the beach, we were at a loss and didn't know what to do, where to go, who to turn to. And lots of parents couldn't go to work because all the centers were closed.
Alarmed by the imminent negative impacts of COVID-19 on both early childhood education and childcare, Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County took immediate action. The nonprofit organization formed a committee consisting of board members, staff, and stakeholders, who worked together to develop a plan to present to the Dare County Board of Commissioners. Recognizing the severity of the struggles that these parents and childcare providers were facing, the commissioners took a proactive approach to the problem and helped to secure a solution that is unique to Dare County and the state of North Carolina. In early January, at its first meeting of 2021, the Dare County Board of Commissioners approved Children and Youth Partnership's proposal for the Early Childhood Education and Assistance Grant. This action resulted in the county providing $350,000 in funding to help childcare providers continue to operate throughout the crisis and to ensure that they are available to take care of the community's children once COVID-19 becomes a thing of the past.
The Early Childhood Education and Childcare Assistance Grant came out of the Dare County General Fund. Because the impact of COVID left some monies in some existing budgets that were unused, we were able to immediately make this money available to childcare operators up to $10,000. And I'm just so very proud of Dare County government rising to this challenge.
The positive impacts of the grant have been wide and far-reaching, with more than a dozen Dare County daycares currently receiving assistance in the form of $400 per month per vacancy, funding that has ultimately kept the lights on and the doors open at many childcare facilities during the COVID-19 crisis.
It was very helpful because we're receiving it on those children that we don't have enrolled. So it's on our vacancies. So it's allowing me to keep staff still working, keep our class sizes small, so we're limiting our exposure and being able to just function because our expenditures are three times what they were.
In addition to providing a lifeline for daycare providers who were once concerned that their businesses might not survive the pandemic, the grant has also been a game-changer for the hundreds of parents who rely on childcare facilities remaining open so that they can continue to stay in the workforce during and post-pandemic.
I mean, it was very scary not to know when kids were going back to school, how they were going to go back to school. But given the resources that they are offering and providing, we've been able to do it, and we've been able to do it very successfully. And most importantly, our kids are happy.
By establishing this grant program, Dare County is taking a proactive approach to enable the community's children to have somewhere safe to go and to ensure that their parents are able to stay in the workforce during and after the COVID-19 crisis.
Wow. It doesn't get any better than that, does it, Commissioner House?
That was, again, I'm really proud of this board, Children and Youth Partnership, the parents. It was a collective corporate action. Fantastic.
Absolutely, absolutely. Proud of what this board accomplishes. It's pretty incredible, to say the least. Thank you all.
Thanks again.
County Manager?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. I will say, before we get into public comment, today will be the first day since the COVID pandemic began that we're allowing in-person public comment. We have several signed up this morning. Because this is sort of the transition meeting, we also have several that have signed up to do it virtually. But after this meeting, we won't be doing the virtual anymore. We will allow the public to come to public comment for our future meetings. We do have to socially distance, and they do have to wear masks. And as you can see from out here, how the chairs are set up, there's a limited number that can be in the meeting. If we have public comment that exceeds this capacity, then we've got 168 set up where we can put people over there as well to wait their turn to speak as we go into the future. So that'll be the rules going forward, and I just wanted to say that publicly for those who are watching. And certainly, as we put out our notices and things, it'll be shared on the notices as well. With that said, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning and you're present, I will call on you. When I do, please come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Similarly, those of you that are doing this virtually, when we finish with the people that are present, we will go to those that are virtual, and we'll ask you for your public comment. Again, state your name and where you're from. Please make comments. The board doesn't engage in conversation and questions during the public comment time, so this is a time for you to tell the board what you think. And then after that, the board will go forward with the agenda. So with that said, the first person on the agenda is Spotswood Graves.
Welcome back, Spotswood.
Thank you, sir. I am Spotswood Graves. I live in Kill Devil Hills, and I've been a resident of Dare County for 43 years. Many of you know that I am an admirer of Abraham Lincoln. A number of years ago, I brought to you the Gettysburg Address. I read it to you at that time. Don't know that you are aware, but on April the 14th of this year, it would be 156 years since President Lincoln was assassinated. I would wish to share with you a part of what he considered the greatest speech that he ever gave. Some would think it was the Gettysburg Address, but he said, no, it was the Second Enormal Address. 703 words spoken about six weeks before he was killed at the end of the Civil War. The surrender had not taken place at that time when he spoke on March the 4th, 1865. Some thought that he should give a victory speech, some thought he should give a speech of condemnation. He didn't either. I wish to read a portion of that speech, again, one of the greatest speeches of American history, one of the greatest, one of the greatest presidents, speaking, "Here is a man who took no vacation in four years. Here is a man who lived the anguish of the Civil War. Here is a man who buried two of his sons, young sons, during this time, a man acquainted with grief and with sorrows." I read, not the entire, "One eighth of the entire population were colored slaves, not distributed generally over the Union, but localized in the southern part of it. These slaves constituted a peculiar and powerful interest. All knew that this interest was somehow the cause of the war. To strengthen, perpetuate, and extend this interest was the object for which the insurgents would rend the Union, even by war, while the government claims no right to do more than restrict the territorial enlargement of it. Neither party expected the war, the magnitude, or the duration which it had already attained. Neither anticipated that the cause of the conflict might cease with or even before the conflict itself should cease. Each looked for an easy triumph, and a result less fundamental and astounding. Both read the same Bible and pray to the, both read the same Bible and pray to the same God, and each invokes his aid against the other. It may seem strange that any men should dare to ask a just God's assistance in wringing their bread from the sweat of other men's faces. But let us not judge, not that we, let us judge, not that we be not judged. The prayers of both cannot be answered. That of neither has been answered fully. The Almighty has his own purposes. Woe unto the world because of offenses, for which it must needs be that offense cometh; but woe to that man by whom the offense cometh." Then I read the last paragraph that is well-known. "With malice toward none, with charity for all, with firmness in the right as God gives us to see the right, let us strive on to finish the work that we are in, to bind up the nation's wounds, to care for him who shall have borne the battle, and for his widow and his orphan, and to do all which may achieve and cherish a just and lasting peace among ourselves and with all nations." I would only add one thing. I would only add one thing. This was written in 1865. It is strange to me that he does not mention anything about the enslaved people in that time. And I would believe that it is that struggle that is the biggest struggle that we have in our nation now, of how we can have a just and lasting peace for those individuals. Thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing that, Spotswood.
Next is Ann Martellus.
Welcome, Ms. Martellus.
Good morning. My name's Ann Martellus. I'm speaking this morning regarding the potential sale of Dare Home Health and Hospice. I've been a member of the community and homeowner in the county for more than a decade. I relocated here from a larger city because of the local community focus in the Outer Banks, and I plan to finish out my career and retire here. I've worked in the health, I have worked in healthcare my entire career, and I have been a registered nurse for more than 25 years. For a number of years, I worked in home health and hospice for a large privately-owned, for-profit home health and hospice company. Currently, I work as a nurse case manager under contract with the U.S. Department of Defense, caring for our active men and women in uniform. As a registered nurse, I'm a frontline healthcare worker, and as a county resident, I am always concerned about the healthcare provided in our community, especially to those that are so vulnerable to be confined to home or dealing with the anguish of facing end-of-life and needing hospice care. I have followed the discussion of the potential sale of the county-owned home health and hospice agency since it was first discussed in front of you all in December. I was hopeful that the ultimate decision made by the county would see this vitally-important service remain local. As far as I'm aware, most of the healthcare providers in our community are locally overseen within this region. As I have followed this discussion at the various meetings, the process seems to have been limited in transparency. The RFP request does not appear to have ever been posted on the county's website. The first public hearing was not advertised any way that generated any participation. And rather than choosing to post the submitted bids on the county's website, it was made more difficult for the community members to view the proposals by requiring an in-person trip to the county manager's office. This seems particularly irresponsible in the middle of a pandemic and especially created a hardship for elderly residents confined to home who are most likely the recipients of home healthcare in the county. When the Commissioners' meeting, when the Commissioners' meeting agenda for today was posted late last week, I was very surprised to see the recommendation to approve a letter of intent with Bright Spring Health. After speaking on the phone on Monday with Chairman Woodard, he said to me that the board had reviewed their proposal already and believed this was the best for the county and for the agency's employees. I understand that from a purely financial aspect of how much will be paid to the county, it is the best. However, there was only one bid from a nonprofit entity that already has a local presence in our county. It would be expected that a nonprofit would be able to offer less cash than a global-investment-owned for-profit company. Bright Spring's parent company even advertises that they seek to generate attractive investment returns for its fund investors. This leaves the only rational conclusion to be that Bright Spring would operate in our communities in a way that is driven primarily toward profit and a return for their investors. A nonprofit entity that has already invested in our community seems to make much more sense when this is looked at from a public health perspective and not how much money can be generated for the county through a sale. The healthcare of our elderly residents should not have a price tag placed on it. One of the most personally important reasons for me speaking today is to ensure the employees have a voice and are represented. As reported in the Coastland Times yesterday and indicated in their letter of intent, Bright Spring makes no specific guarantee of employment for the agency's current employees. Having worked for, having worked for a for-profit national home care company, I know firsthand that many positions such as leadership roles and positions that provide administrative assistance, billing functions, and other customer service responsibilities will likely be centralized out of our community and jobs will be lost. The county manager is quoted in the media earlier this year as saying that the county was committed to protecting its employees with any contract it may enter into. He specifically stated that, "We would certainly have their backs and do everything to protect them." Yet today, he is asking you all to approve a letter of intent with an organization that makes no guarantee of employment to the staff he spoke of. You have another bidder that is willing to commit to employing every staff member, keeping them employed for at least a year, offering a bonus of $3,000 to stay on after the sale. How do you have their back when you are choosing a bid that offers them the least protection and guarantee? In an economy already hammered by the COVID pandemic, I would think that our leaders would be doing everything possible to keep every job in the county local. I hope this board will reverse course and not agree to sign a letter of intent with a Kentucky-based, national-investor-owned, for-profit company and invite them to increase their profits off the healthcare of our most vulnerable residents. Please keep our healthcare local. Choose the provider that has already been invested in our, in our community for more than 35 years. Choose the, choose the only bidder that is committed to caring for our uninsured and underinsured population by providing-
Your time is up. You need to conclude your remarks, please.
Pardon?
Your time is up. You need to conclude your remarks, please.
Okay. The only bidder that is committed, committed to caring for our under, uninsured and underinsured population by providing a million dollars in charity care that will go directly to the community members that need it most. In closing, I will appeal to all of you and specifically to Mr. Woodard, who represents my district here. Based on the feedback from the community and the information shared here, please reconsider your position and decide that Bright Springs is not what is best for the agency's employees and not what is best for our residents of the community. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Next is Alexi Martellus.
I didn't get her name.
Alexi?
It's Alexi Martellus. Like I just said, my name is Alexi Martellus. I am a resident of Kill Devil Hills. I'm also a social worker with years of experience caring for the chronically homeless population and low-income adults with complex mental illnesses and physical disabilities. I strongly believe in the incredible benefits that come out of meeting people where they are, coming to their home, and caring for them when they are at a vulnerable time in their lives. Providing compassionate in-home care gives patients an opportunity to recover or be treated for an illness while surrounded by their family and in the comfort of their home. Compassionate in-home care should not change based on a patient's ability to pay, their type of insurance, or where they live. As a social worker and a member of the Dare County community, I am deeply concerned about the potential letter of intent today with Bright Spring. After reading their proposal, I learned that they made no commitment to care for patients with Medicaid or patients in every corner of Dare County. Bright Spring is a for-profit health system, and the bottom line is that Medicaid does not pay, the same for services as compared to private insurance companies. I was surprised to see our county manager quoted in the Outer Banks Voice this morning as saying that Bright Spring is being considered because they are, quote, "a big company" and are offering $2.9 million to the county. I implore you to consider the care provided by whoever you choose to sell to and not solely look at the size of their company or the dollar amount offered. Bigger does not mean better. Low-income members of our community deserve and advocate for their healthcare needs. I believe that it is irresponsible for the county to sell Dare Home Health and Hospice to a health system that is not guaranteeing to care for our whole community. However, after reading Chesapeake's proposal, I learned that they have committed to accept Medicaid patients, patients without insurance, and are contributing $1 million in uncompensated care in Dare County over the next 10 years. On the Dare County Board of Commissioners' website and at the top of the agenda, it states, "The Board of Commissioners serves the people of Dare County. At each meeting, they remind themselves of their public service mission by placing the following question at the top of their agenda: How will these decisions impact our children and families?" I urge the Commissioners to remind themselves of their public service. Their decision about this affects our community and its health and well-being. Signing a letter of intent with Bright Spring lacks empathy for the community and is at the expense of members of our community that need home health and hospice care but are unable to afford it. Thank you.
Carl left. Okay, that's all that I had on the signup sheet. We have one person virtually, Danielle Stein. Stein, are you on? Ms. Stein, are you on? We can't hear you on this end. There we go. Ms. Stein?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and where you're from, and you have five minutes.
Sure. My name is Danielle Stein. I'm a resident of Manio, and I'm just seconding everything that the two women stated. And I truly feel that Bright Spring is for-profit over people. Their focus is making the maximum amount of money as fast as possible. They're not concerned with the care of our residents at all. And they will be more likely, be willing to cut corners in order to keep control of the business and, and more involved in making money. The for-profit costs more, it's going to cost more for our residents. For example, home health, nursing for Dare Home Health is $129 a visit, and with Bright Spring, it would be $180. That is a large chunk of money that they're going to have to fork out. And like I said, their drive is for profit for their owners and investors, not for the concern of our residents. Thank you.
Chairman, that's all I have for public comment. We would move on now to item three on the agenda is the presentation of the county service pins to recognize our employees for their years of service, and I think we have a video for that.
Today, I'm pleased to recognize and honor three employees who have been incredible assets to Dare County over the years. First is Laura Geyer, Administrative Specialist for the Dare County Department of Health and Human Services. She's been with our Environmental Health Unit for 20 years. Laura has spent her entire career of 20 years with the Dare County Department of Health and Human Services as an administrative specialist for the Environmental Health Unit. She is the contact person for all initial interactions with customers via phone and email, as well as in-person office visits before COVID-19. Laura has built professional relationships with many real estate agents, building contractors, septic contractors, and homeowners throughout her career, many of whom spoken highly of her through the years. She played a vital role in ensuring that the food and lodging staff completes 100% of the required inspections each year. Laura is also the keeper of thousands of paper files, and she provides the septic staff with the files and the paperwork necessary for their daily workloads. Laura plans on retiring early with 20 years of service on June the 1st. She will be headed off to the Sunshine State for a couple of months each year with her husband and their two German Shepherd dogs, and wish Laura the best and thank her for 20 years of service to Dare County. Next is Maggie Dennis. Maggie's a senior real property appraiser in our tax department, and she has 25 years of service. She began her career with Dare County on April 8, 1996. She has served in many different roles throughout the years, and she currently holds the title of Senior Real Estate Property Appraiser. Maggie's main responsibility is administering the property tax exemption program for Dare County. This includes three local property tax relief programs for qualified homeowners: the elderly or disabled exclusion, the Circuit Breaker Tax Defirmment Program, and the Disabled Veteran Exclusion. Maggie works diligently to assist taxpayers in their understanding of and the maneuvering through these sometimes complex and confusing programs. Away from the county, Maggie volunteers her time to various admirable causes. When she's not working, she enjoys spending time with her husband Neil and their son Jaden. Maggie is a hard-working, dedicated individual. Thank you for your 25 years of service, and we're very fortunate to have you on our team. Next is Charlotte Midget Winstead. Charlotte's a leisure program supervisor with the Dare County Parks and Recreation Department, and she's receiving her 25 years of service pin. Charlotte is a charismatic person with great enthusiasm and a strong, uplifting personality. She is sensitive but with good humor and responsiveness. Charlotte keeps her eye on her folks and is a very positive influence on those around her. At the same time, she is calm and confident. Charlotte has terrific interpersonal skills and has been an effective and valued negotiator on issues during the COVID-19 pandemic. She's had to make difficult decisions on programs that had to be canceled or modified due to the social distancing. Charlotte is also an effective member of the community. She has served as the PTA president for First Flight Elementary School, president of the Dare County Women's Softball League, and also served as president of the Outer Banks Tennis Association. Extracurricular activities aside, Charlotte has contributed tremendously to the Dare County Parks and Recreation Department as well as to her community. Charlotte has three children, Haley, Emma, and Andrew, and one grandson, Wade. This past Christmas, she received the Christmas present of her life. She married her soulmate, Matt Winstead. Thank you, Charlotte, for your 25 years of service. The Parks and Rec Department and our residents enjoy working with you each day. Congratulations to all of our April 2021 service pin recipients. We thank each of you for your dedication to the Outer Banks community and for your continued service to Dare County.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item four on the agenda, and this is a presentation for, from Dr. Landon Mason, Sr., with regard to the Economic Improvement Council Community Action Agency, and this is a virtual presentation.
Good morning. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very kindly. I wanted to thank you publicly, Mr. Heston, for your support, and so did to Chairman Woodard and the Dare County Board of Commissioners. Let me say thank you for giving me this opportunity to share some exciting information and news relative to the Economic Improvement Council Community Action Agency. Again, I cannot say how appreciative I am to have this opportunity to share some incredible information that I know will impact and enrich your hearing. The Economic Improvement Council Community Action Agency, as you are aware, we are governed by a 15-member board of directors, which is responsible for the fiduciary and the legal responsibilities of the agency. And Dare County, of course, Ms. Jessica Davenport, she serves as a representative from Dare. My presentation, of course, will be brief, but it will be very informative. Our mission here at the Economic Improvement Council Community Action Agency, our mission is to serve those citizens that are in Dare County that have been disenfranchised economically. The population there in Dare County that lives in poverty, according to the latest census recorded by David USA, is 8.24% of the population there in Dare County lives in poverty. And so those citizens are at or below the poverty guidelines, and so it is our mission and our mandate to empower them, not with handouts, but with hands up. So I want to thank you so much again for your continued leadership.
We've, we've lost you, Mr. Mason.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
You're back.
Okay, beautiful. And so again, let me say thank you to the Commissioners for your continued leadership and partnering with us as we continue to deal with this growing phenomenon of poverty. In our, of course, agency, very briefly, we have five programs that operate out of Dare County. The first program, of course, is Early Head Start. And when you look at the actual data that's on the screen, if you could perhaps scroll up just a little, the actual Head Start children- up just a little, the actual Head Start children that I serve in Dare County is 37 children. That total revenue for 37 children would be $340,674.17. And then, of course, we have Early Head Start. We serve eight children there in that program, and that cumulative total revenue is $64,000. And then our Housing Choice Voucher Program for Section 8, we have 39 customers that we served in fiscal year 2019, 2020. And there was a cumulative total of revenue of $254,964. And then in our Community Services Block Grant Program, there were six customers that were served with a cumulative total of $27,597.67. Last and certainly not least is our Weaponization Program, and we served three customers there, and there was a cumulative total of $12,546.13. Giving us a cumulative total of customers served in Dare County for fiscal year 1920 was 93, and the total revenue of federal funds that we were able to support those customers And so, those are the resources that contributes to the impact there in Dare County as how we're able to partner to target that particular audience of those citizens in the county that are living at or below the poverty guidelines. And again, we are ecstatic about this whole notion of people helping people. And so our aim and our mission is to target those that are in the community that have been disenfranchised economically. And so again, we are definitely grateful to your partnership, and we appreciate your advocacy as we be about the business of serving those families that obviously are at or below the poverty guidelines. I want to just share a word of thanks to the Dare County Commissioners as relates to our Community Services Block Grant application. That application will come to your office every year because it is regulatory. It is mandatory in our state plan that the county commissioners receive a copy of the Community Services Block Grant application. That application is submitted for your review, not for any kind of approval, only because everything that's in the packet is already legislated or regulated. For example, the budget allocation, the state of North Carolina, OEO's office, they come up with a formula that will determine and decide how much revenue community action agencies will receive in the Community Services Block Grant Program. Once that allocation has been decided upon, obviously, we do not have the authority nor the power as an agency to negotiate that. Our Board of Directors don't. All of that is handled directly from our state office, and the allocation is given to us. In addition to that, there are different documents that are comprised of that application that are just regulatory, and that's the reason why there is no approval that's needed. What's needed is the Commissioners to receive a copy, the clerk would indicate by signature that their particular county have received a copy of the application, and that's all that is required for the CSBG application. So every year, we have to send that application package out to all of our county commissioners, and I want to say publicly how we appreciate your continued support in that. Last, certainly but not least, the next slide, of course, is the actual big pop-up tent event. This is going to be huge. It's going to be huge. We will be serving, of course, 13, basically, service most of northeast North Carolina, and those counties are Beaufort, Camden, Currituck, Chilwan, Dare, Gateshead, Pasquettank, Brequimmons, Martin, Washington, Tiro. And so those 13 counties that we serve, and to include Pitt County, those counties that we serve, and of course, other counties such as Verde County, they will be able to come to this big pop-up tent event that's going to be held at the Brequimmons County Recreation Center on Tuesday, May 25th, and we're going to start at 10:00, we're going to end at 2:00. Citizens can come, they can pop their trunk, and then we're going to pack it with things such as water. We're partnering with the Food Bank, we're partnering with Food Lion, we're partnering with the Abama Regional Health Services. They would be partnering with us, offering vaccines. And so if anyone comes to the event, they're welcome to come, they can receive their vaccination, they'll wait 15 minutes. Of course, they'd be privileged to the actual products that we will be giving away to help empower families during this national pandemic. And so again, we are ecstatic about it. We have partners that are on board. We would love to be able to put out the ask if Dare County County Commissioners would be so kind in sponsoring us with any kind of monetary donation. It would be very, very helpful. But of course, we're going to move forward and make sure we give all of the citizens in northeast North Carolina an opportunity to receive products at no cost to them. This initiative is sponsored by the North Carolina Community Action Association, which I am humbled to be the president of that particular body. There are 34 community action agencies in the state of North Carolina, and we are leveraging well over $450 million as a cumulative total. And so I did wanted to share that big pop-up event, People Helping People. They'll pop the trunk, we'll pack it. We're also in need of volunteers. If you know of anyone that's interested in volunteering, we'd be too happy to have their support. I can promise you this in closing, it would be an event none other that have taken place in northeast North Carolina because we are going to engage the whole northeastern community in this initiative. So again, thank you so much, Chairman Woodard, and to the Dare County Commissioners for the work that you do. Thank you, Mr. Hester, for this time. And if there are any questions, I'd be more than glad to share any observations with any questions that may be raised.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mason. Incredible work with those nanny-three families and those federal funds. It's incredible. Really appreciate all your hard work. I'll ask the Board if they have any questions of Mr. Mason. Anyone have any questions, Mr. Mason? Not at this time, Mr. Mason, but certainly thank you so much for the work that you do, and thank you for being here this morning and making this presentation to our Board.
Thank you very kindly, Chairman Woodard.
You have a great day.
Chairman, that brings us to item five on the agenda, and that's the Dare County Home Health and Hospice. As you know, we've talked about this several times, and I'll give you a little history so we can put all this in context. Home Health and Hospice was started in Dare County many years ago because there was no home health and hospice service in Dare County at all. The private sector did not provide that care, and there was a need for that care, and so the county stepped in to provide that care and has been providing it ever since. Over the last, we only went back, I think, 11 years, but for most of the time that we've been doing this, and certainly as long as I've been here, we've run that program at a deficit. It has lost money almost every year. There's a few years it made money, but it's lost several hundred thousand dollars a year most years, and, you know, that trend has continued. Similarly, we've had, there's a high turnover rate in that department, and that has continued. And now, in these times, trying to replace that turnover has been difficult. We've looked at how, what can we do internally to fix it? How do we recover those hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenues each year? And there's no easy answer to that. When we look at raising nurses' salaries, that may help us hire the nurse. Whether it'll help us retain the nurse or not, we don't know because the call schedule seems to be the issue that we hear on exit interviews with why people can't, don't want to work there continuously and leave when they find something better. Similarly, even with the raised pay, if you go back and look at the years when we were fully staffed and we didn't, we had every nurse on there, we lost money in those years as well. And so having the full staff doesn't solve the losses. And so we then looked at, you know, could we get a staffing agency in to provide staff? We found that the cost of that would be probably more than the cost for us to hire the nurses, and so that, again, compounds the losses that we're already incurring in that agency. And so, again, with limited options, we looked at, okay, what happens if we sell? Is there a market for this? Can we sell it? Can we get a private sector in here that can do it better because they have economies of scales and things that we can't do that would make it viable? And so you all said, yeah, let's look at that. And so we did, and we hired an attorney, and we hired a consultant that specializes in these things to help take us through a process to see what that means. What does a sale mean? What does it mean to us? What does it mean to the service area? What does it mean to the staff and those kind of things? That process is an RFQ process that the consultant handled for us, that they went out and took sort of our criteria. We had a number of our criteria. The first and foremost was we wanted to be sure that whoever was going to put in an RFQ for this agency, that they would provide the services throughout the county. That was from Hatteras Village to Stumpy Point and all places in between, and we didn't want them cherry picking the places that were more profitable versus the places that were not. And so one of the criterias is that we maintain the full service area. The other thing, we were sensitive to the impact that a decision like this might have on our employees, and we had to be sure that the employees were taken care of and that, you know, we did the right thing by the employees. And so that was included in that RFQ as well. And then certainly, it sort of goes without saying, but with all those said, if you can meet all the criteria and do what we need to do, then whoever can meet those criteria and provide it at the highest value to us would also be a part of the equation going forward. And so with that process, there were 12 entities that were interested, we understand, from our consultant. And of those 12, four submitted proposals, and those four proposals are the proposals that you all have and you all have seen. Those proposals came from Chesapeake Hospital, outfit called Help View, another outfit called MSA, and another group called Bright Spring. When we go back and look at our spreadsheet and our matrix on our, what we asked for, when we go, first of all, do they, number 15 on our list that you have on the spreadsheet, all of them said that they would cover our entire service area. So each one of them understood that's what we wanted, and each one of them checked yes, that that would be something that they would do as well. When we look at the employee benefits, all of them provide help, dental, vision, life, disability, HSA, FSA, 401K. They were a little bit different on some of them. They all said that they would hire our employees and take our employees, subject to their hiring policies, background checks, and those kind of things. You heard from one of the public comments that Chesapeake offered a $3,000 staff bonus to stay on. None of the other ones offered that. On the other hand, Bright Spring offered tenure for all of the agency benefits to our employees, and Chesapeake did not offer that. With that said, the other things, they all take Medicaid patients. There was something about charity care. Chesapeake does about 2% of their revenue in fiscal, in the current fiscal year, and have done about 0.62% in the last three fiscal years, or fiscal years. Help View has no history, but said they had planned to do about 1%. MSA said they did 1% in the prior fiscal year and 1% in the last three years. And Bright Spring says their net revenue for charity care would be 2.65% in the prior fiscal year and 2.07% in the last three fiscal years. So they are doing for charity as well. So when you look at these agencies, for the most part, they offer substantially the same thing, subject to getting down in the weeds and figuring out the details of what all this means. And then when you go back up and look at the price, you have Chesapeake offered $250,500, MSA offered $300,000, Help View offered $800,000, and Bright Spring offered $2.9 million, nearly $3 million. So from our perspective, from looking at this, we brought back to you a letter of intent from Bright Spring because it met the criteria that we set, and it had the highest price, and the criteria weren't substantially different than the other criteria. However, what we need to know is what does it mean when you're going to take our service area for how long, and how are we going to get assurances for that, and what's going to be in the contract? We don't know that yet. And similarly, when you talk about our employees and our commitment to our employees, what exactly does that mean? What does that mean for timing? What does that mean for them? What does that mean for transition? And we don't know that for yet. So in order to go through with any of these companies and have that level of detail of talk, you do a letter of intent, and this is coming from our lawyers. This isn't our process. This is the process that they brought to us. And in that letter of intent, there's an exchange of information, information that comes to us from them and discussions from them. Some of it's confidential, some of it is not. And similarly, they do a due diligence on us. They come in with their consultants and spend their money to figure out whether we're somebody that, you know, we have anything hidden or anything in our financials that would make them weary. And so you have to go through this letter of intent process to get down into the details about these things that are important to us, and for them to get into things about us that are important to them before you make any decisions. So the letter of intent's not a decision that we're going to go with Bright Spring. It's a decision that, from the offer and the materials that we've got, they've met our criteria. Now we need to dig into the details. In order to dig into the details, we have to get a letter of intent that says that, you know, we're looking to go in that direction, assuming everything comes out per our criteria and what we like. If we don't like what we hear, don't like what they tell us, don't like what comes out of this process, we don't have to sell it to them. We're not required. This is a non-binding letter of intent. It doesn't require us to do anything except act in good faith, and it requires us to go forward with them to go through this detailed process. They have to spend money to do this on their end, and so you don't do four of them at a time because you're not going to spend the money and the time and the effort if you're not in the running to start with. And so you do them one at a time. Given this was the highest one, we're going to go through it. We'll have an opportunity to vet all these issues, and if we're satisfied, then we can move forward. If we're not satisfied, then we conclude those talks and say, you know, we aren't satisfied. Once we've done that, prior to you making any kind of a decision, whether you're going to go with them or not go with them, or having any kind of a vote on whether to start another process with another company, you have to have a public hearing. You can't move forward with a sale of the agency to anyone without having a public hearing. And so there's an opportunity for the public to come in and give you their comments, as they've done this morning, to hear what you have to say and to hear what direction you're going. And if that's possible, we'll look at doing that on the 19th. If we don't have enough information to do that by the 19th, if the process is slower than that, then we'll wait and have the public hearing once we have all the information in, so that everybody will understand what we're doing and why we're doing it, and they'll have something to comment upon. So that's the process that we're in right now. For anyone who thinks that we've made that decision and it's final, they're wrong. That hasn't been done. I don't know how many times I've said that as I've spoken with you, but I've said it a lot. The implication was this morning that we didn't care about our employees. I don't understand how they could say that. We've been very public about that. That's the top two criteria, and we certainly do care about the employees, and we'll look at that very carefully. The implication was that we didn't care about the service to our community. That's not true either. I mean, that was our top criteria to make sure that the service to the community is what we expected. There was an implication this morning that we didn't care about Medicare patients. Each one of these, all of them, take Medicare patients. Each one of these, all of them, take Medicare patients. You know, there was an implication that we didn't care about charity care. They all give charity care. In fact, Bright Springs gives the most. They're the largest and give the largest percent. So, their numbers would be higher than anybody else's, and they're higher than anybody else's on a percentage basis as well. And so, all of those things, we do care about, and all of those things are important, and all of those things are things that we'll look at. And we're now just going through the process to do exactly that. And so, with that said, absent any questions, you have these four entities in front of you. You've seen and had in your packet and even before the proposals that they've made. And now, you're going to choose, you don't have to choose Bright Spring this morning, but if we're going to move forward, you've got to choose somebody to move forward with a letter of intent to go forward, so that we can get into the discussions and deal with all of those issues that we've just outlined. And so, that's where you are this morning. You have Bright Spring before you. If you chose not to pick Bright Spring this morning and you picked someone else, then we would go back to them and get a letter of intent from them and come back and do the same thing. And that's where we are. So, the action before you is, one, if you have questions, please ask. Sheila is here to answer questions as well, and we'll answer any questions that you have. And upon completion of answering those questions, then it'd be up to you to decide which one. And if it's Bright Springs, then you would approve the letter of intent and allow us to get going with those discussions to find out in detail what all this is meaning, so that you'll have the information to make final decisions with.
Thank you, County Manager. I'm going to ask the Board of Commissioners, prior to any motion or anything, if you have any questions of the County Manager. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bobby, how many counties in North Carolina have gone to a, if you will, privatized system like we're considering?
Almost all of them have gone. There's only four, when we started this, there were, I think, six or eight that were still doing home health and hospice in North Carolina. I think at that time, several of them were for sale. And if those sales are completed, now we're down to five or six at the most.
Is it reasonable to assume that those systems are working in the other 90-some counties reasonably well, or we would have heard something about it?
So, I would tell you, I don't know about all the other counties. I'll tell you that when we looked at Bright Spring, for example, Bright Spring acquired a number of the HSAs that were owned by hospital groups throughout North Carolina. So, they have a presence in North Carolina. And when we ask our consultant and our attorney, they deal with these folks in, on both sides of the issue every day. It's what they do in their job. If there are any issues with Bright Spring, they said there were not. There were no issues, that all of the sales had been smooth, the transitions had been smooth, and to their knowledge, all the services had been smooth. I know that they sold, Stanley County was recently purchased by Bright Spring. Sheila contacted them, and they gave us the same report. They didn't have any issues. It all went smooth, and there are no issues. And so, we don't, we aren't aware of any, and the entities that we've talked to have said there are. Our consultants say there aren't. And so, nothing that we're aware of that will create red flags. Dave ran a Dunn and Bradstreet report on them to see if there was any red flags in that, and there were not. And so, you know, we don't have any red flags at the moment.
Thank you. Several of the points that have been raised, either through emails or public comment, has been with regard, and you touched base on it, just to get it on the record again, is acceptance of Medicaid, which they all, they all do.
Yes.
And also, use the current staff. And if I read the spreadsheet correctly, Bright Spring is offering to use all of our current staff, subject to their normal hiring policies, which anybody would be considering. Is that correct?
And, yes, and Sheila went back through our consultant and our attorney to confirm that, and that is, in fact, the case.
The other thing that I found interesting in this, and you pointed this out as well, is the percent of net revenue for charity care. And if you use the highest numbers from the others, Bright Spring was two to three times the other systems. And if you look at some past years, they're as high as 10 times higher at their current 2% level of putting money back into charity care, which I think speaks highly of them as well. But anyway, just wanted to clear those things up. Thank you.
County Manager, a couple of comments. It was brought to our attention this morning in public comment that there was a publication in the Coastland Times that, and I quote, the public comments person that stated this, said that Coastland Times stated that there were no guarantees as far as hiring practices. I will point out to the board, and I haven't seen that article, by the way, so Murray Helen, if that's true, is wrong. In a letter sent to you, County Manager, on March 31st, from President, Home Healthcare and Rehabilitation Services Roxanne Dimico, number eight in that letter states, "Employees. Bright Springs intends to hire substantially all of the business current employees after closing and to make offers and employment to all such employees, subject to Bright Springs established hiring practices and requirements, such as clean background checks and rehire status." Now, I mean, that would be, heck, that'd be standard if we're hiring somebody.
Excuse me. If I add, in that regard, while you're all, when Sheila called back, one of the concerns that we had when we saw that and when we saw their proposal was, were they talking about just our clinical staff, or were they also talking about our administrative staff?
Right. I didn't finish reading.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't finish reading. In addition, in that paragraph, it stated, "With respects to any of such employees that are hired by Bright Springs, those employees will be credited with their length of service to the seller of Bright Springs Benefit Plan's purposes." Now, when the heck does the public and the people that are making the comments saying there's no guarantees of hire? If they claim that they've read this information, which they said that they did, then they didn't obviously read it right. With respects to employee infringed benefits, in addition, Bright Springs says, "We will tenure agency staff for benefits such as dental, vision, health, life, disability, HSA, FSA, 401K." MSA made a proposal, said, "We will give tenure credit for certain benefits, not all the benefits." Health View says, "Health, vacation, sick leave, dah 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 dah." No tenure. And then Chesapeake says, "Cannot tenure agency staff for benefits." So, I wanted to set the record straight with request, with respects to the individual that spoke before us this morning and set the record straight. Her comments were certainly not accurate, and I wanted to set the record straight there. I will ask Dr. Davies, one of my reasons for agreeing to look at this several, a month or so ago, with respects to moving forward and looking at this, because we've had so much trouble, and I can't expect you to remember all of the things, but you, obviously, this morning, County Manager, you mentioned a considerable number of those. Dr. Davies, correct me if I'm wrong. One of the reasons that I wanted to move forward with looking at this was a simple fact of the matter, is that we cannot, and we have not been successful, in being able to hire the proper staff in the recent years. Am I correct? And just answer me yes or no, and I'll ask you to elaborate on that in a minute. But is that not correct?
It is correct that we've had staffing challenges.
Okay.
And difficulties in hiring.
And in addition to that, one of the reasons that I agreed to move forward to look at this publicly, privately, was the fact that we are not serving those that are in need because we're short of personnel to the extent that we really need to be extending the services to them. Am I correct there?
So, if I just may share that-
Yes, ma'am. You can elaborate.
The staff team that we have, as you well know, and you all have complimented them on countless occasions, do an absolutely incredible job. We are blessed with our staff team. But we have had years and years of staffing challenges, and securing and keeping nursing staff has been our biggest challenge, as well as nursing aides. And there's many, many factors that make that so difficult. So, we have, over the last two years, had to limit our census, meaning we've had to deny accepting patients because we've been short-staffed. We did make a agency decision to start hiring LPNs. We had not been hiring LPNs because they can't do the same scope as our RNs. So, within the past couple of months, we've been able to hire two LPNs to help, but it's not diminishing the challenges that we have with call because they can't do admissions. So, it still puts a tremendous burden on our reduced count of current nurses. So, it's been an ongoing challenge, but certainly hats off to the team members who've been hanging in there and delivering the quality care they have. But we, back to your point, have unfortunately not been able to accept all the patients who have been wanting to receive services from us.
Absolutely, Dr. Davies. And our folks that are working do a fabulous job. We are still understaffed, correct?
Correct.
Correct. My goal moving forward is we correct that. If, in fact, this board, as a group decides, to whoever they use in a public-private partnership with respects to this, that, quite honestly, looking with what we've been seeing in the last several years and what we're faced with now of not being able to hire, we're going to do a better job if we partner with one of these folks, because we're going to see more people serviced, we're going to have staff that's going to be able to provide it, and we're going to service it through all of Dare County. So, those were my reasons of moving forward. I've not made any specific decision on any particular one firm, but I wanted to set the record straight this morning with some of the things that were brought before our attention. And Dr. Davies, thank you for doing that. And once again, continue to, those that we do have on staff, that is a key of mine, is that we make sure that these employees of ours are offered employment with whoever we go to. And that's critical. That is critical, as far as I'm concerned. And the other critical need is that we are being able to service those that do have the need. So, I'll get off my spiel and open the floor up for the rest of you guys for any comments. I see Commissioner Bateman, you'd like to make some comments.
I would. I respect everybody's opinion. I like everybody's read all the emails we got and so forth. And I thank you for you coming in, taking the time out, you and the other young lady, to voice your opinion. Very passionate about what you said, and I appreciate that. It shows community involvement, shows caring, and thank you for what your thoughts are. But I will tell you this, in the four meetings that we've had, off and on, concerning this, not one time, ma'am, not one time, did not every one of these commissioners say the first thing out of their mouth was they were concerned about the welfare of the patient or the person being served by the county. It was the first thing. And the second thing they were always talking about was air employees, because we care about those people, very much so. You know, they're our coworkers. There's passion there with us, too. So, there was the two things that are always on the forefront. When Sheila talked and did her presentation to us, it was always, how are we going to serve the people better or as well as we are now? And secondly, how are we going to address the issues with the employees? Are the companies we pick up, are they going to be able to take care of these employees and so forth? That was passionate from us. So, that's, don't let it be concerned that it's about money, 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 money. That's part of it. But the big thing was really, are we taking care of the people? Because we're understaffed now. I got a call yesterday from a gentleman by the name, I'm not going to, I will break his name, Danny Purcell called me and said, "I have a gentleman living below me who's got cancer, and we are trying to get hospice over here. I understand they're running majorly behind and na 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 na." And I said, "Well, I'm going to see Ms. Davies tomorrow. I will mention it to her. If you do not get a call back today, but I tell you, we're understaffed." That's a fact. That's a fact. So, we're talking about people who need a service that we're having a hard time getting to because we're so behind and we're so understaffed. If we, for instance, if I was selling my house today and I had four people came up and my house went on the market, somebody offered me 300,000, 250,000, 800,000, 2.9 million, who would I talk to? And if there was all for the same service and everything, I would talk to the highest bidder and give the best service. And that's what we're just looking at. It's not like with the concrete thing, we're definitely going with these people, but it gives the manager and the staff the opportunity to say, "This is where we are. Let's look at it." But don't be confused at any time that we did not take, number one, the health of the person that we're serving, and secondly, the employees into accountability when this decision made, commit to do this thing. So, thanks for letting me share.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Bateman. Commissioner Tebby?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate something that Bobby said. This is a letter of intent. It is non-binding, non-binding. All we're voting on today is whether we should enter into negotiations with a company and set forth, once again, what our needs and what our demands are. And if we can come out the other end of those negotiations with a set of rules, so to speak, that everybody agrees upon, then we'll move forward with a public hearing. So, I think through most of the letters that I received and the comments from the public that I've had, people didn't understand that. They thought that our letter of intent was going to be a binding agreement with Bright Springs, that we were going to have to go through with that contract. That's not true. So, that's really all I wanted to say. And I agree with Irvin in every comment that's been made tonight. We are passionate about these people. We want to serve the people that aren't getting service. And to me, the money's not the thing, really. But yes, I agree with Irvin. If somebody offered me 2.9 million for my house, I'd take it over 300,000.
Thank you, Commissioner Tebby. Commissioner House?
Yeah, I just want to add that I agree with what everybody has said up here. I think we're all pretty much on the same page. I just want to personally say, in my own opinion, I take offense to any letter or any public comment that says I do not care about the citizens of Dare County. I spent 35 years in emergency services. I've seen firsthand what these health and hospice, not only the patients, but also the staff and what they go through. I've worked with them on a daily basis. I want to make sure, number one, our patients are taken care of with the best service possible. Number two, I want to make sure our staff is well taken care of and to make sure that no matter what company we go with, that they will be looked after. So, like I said, I take personal offense to anybody who states that I'm only looking at this at the dollars. I could care less. It's the two things that may remain with me, is the patient care and the welfare of our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Commissioner Couch?
One of the untenable properties that we've been dealing with in this is the Collingtons, the Hatterses, the Mainlands, Stumpy Point. We cannot continue the status quo of how they've been getting this done is beyond me. It's not sustainable. Regardless of what direction we go, having a family member who has had to have services from home, health, and hospice, had a Southern Shores nurse, my brother had an issue, 2:00 in the morning. She came from Southern Shores. How often can you do that when you're running only 30% of your staffing that it takes to do 100% of a job like that? My concern, and the phone calls that I've been getting, have been, how are we going to- the phone calls that I've been getting, have been, how are we going to ensure that the far reaches of Dare County are going to be properly served? Well, if they're not being served now, if this is going to, we're getting into a busy summer, then, I am sympathetic with that, but it's time to hand this off to somebody that can ensure that our people will be taken care of. I have all the respect in the world for health and human services, but it's, again, untenable. We've got to move.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch. I'll just make one more comment. Commissioner Tobin, you've seen it firsthand. You're on those boards. You go to Peak. You go to Spring Harbor. You've seen it firsthand. Commissioner House, 35 years in the EMS business, you've seen it firsthand. I've got a 95, soon-to-be 95-year-old mother in Spring Harbor. I've seen it firsthand. I've ridden twice now with those folks that are employed by Dare County. What they do is incredible, and how they accomplish it, I don't know how they do this in a day's time. I've seen it firsthand. If we're missing out on folks, and Dr. Davies has said it this morning, that we're not able to get to everybody that has that need, then we're not doing our part as a board.
I agree.
And I'll leave it at that. Any other comments? What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the letter of intent and set a public hearing for April 19th, 2021.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve the letter of intent and set a public hearing for April 19th, 2021, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further business? Any further comments?
Would you include in that motion an opportunity to, for staff to postpone that public hearing if we aren't far enough along?
If you're not far enough along?
Right.
Is the maker of the motion going to amend the motion?
Yes.
Is the second agreeable to amend the motion? Okay. So we'll amend the motion to reflect that. Did you get that, clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, before you signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, that brings us to item six on the agenda, and this is for discussion action on the Avon Beach Nurishment Project. In your packet and information I've sent you, you've got a whole lot of statistical stuff that you needed and that is required for you all to make decisions and keep this process moving. There's a summary in there, and I'll go through this, of the process to establish a service district. One, you must consider five items, the population, the property tax values, the tax rates, the ability of the district to pay, and any other matters that you believe have a bearing on that. And so in your packet, we included a lot of that information, the tax data, we included the population data breakdowns. We tried to give you the information that you needed. A lot of the stuff you've already seen, a lot of the stuff you've already talked about. You know, we've given you the tax rates throughout the county for every tax district in the county. And so you have what you need in front of you, and you've had it for a while to consider, if you will, those things. You don't have to, you just have to have that information and consider, and you've had those things. After you now have considered that, you do have to make some findings. You have to make a finding of, I'll read it more formally, that there's a demonstrable need for providing one or more of the services listed in NCGS 153A-301. 153A-301 is the statute that authorizes a service district for a beach erosion control, flood, and hurricane protection work project, which is what this is. You've got to find that it's impossible or impracticable to provide these services on a countywide basis. You've got to find that it's economically feasible to provide the proposed beach erosion control and flood and hurricane protection work services project in the district without an unreasonable or burdensome tax levy. And you've got to make a finding that there's a demonstrable demand for the proposed service by persons residing in the district. And so I'll go through this. You have it in front of you. You have the information that I provided, but sort of the justification for each one of those findings of fact. As you know, for many years, Highway 12 in various locations on Hatteras Island's been flooded, closed, damaged as a result of various weather events, from winter storms to named hurricanes. Over the last several years, the beach and protective dune in Avon has eroded substantially, and Highway 12 in Avon has become one of the locations that floods and closes often. Those closures, often on multiple occasions throughout the year and often for extended periods of time, create severe disruptions to provide the critical public services, EMS, fire, law enforcement, trash collection, et cetera, and create severe disruptions to the life, health, safety, and welfare of the residents of and the visitors to Hatteras Island and Avon in particular. In addition, the severe erosion to the beaches and protective dunes in Avon pose an immediate threat to the ocean-side infrastructure located east of Highway 12. Damage to the oceanfront infrastructure and the repeated closures of Highway 12 will continue to occur and will get worse and more frequent without action in the form of a beach erosion control, flood, and hurricane protection works project. So that's information with regard to finding that there is a need. Beyond that, most of you all have visited there. Most of you all have been there. Most of you all have driven it, have been through it, have tried to wade through the water when it's over the road. You've seen the damage. You've seen the problems. You've heard from the EMS director. You've heard from the sheriff. You've heard from the park service. You've heard from the sanitation director. You've heard all those things multiple times beyond me just telling you this now, to indicate that need for the project. And so there's sufficient information before you, and there may be other things that you can add that allow you to find that there's a need for this project. The next criteria that it's impractical to provide the service throughout the county is pretty easy because the whole county's not oceanfront. You know, when you look at the rest, at Stumpy Point, Mans Harbor, Eastlake, Run Oak Island, Collington, those areas aren't oceanfront. We can't do a beach erosion control and hurricane protection project there because there's no beach there. And so it's definitely impracticable to do this project and tax those areas for this project. Next, it says it is economically feasible to provide the proposed project without an unreasonable or burdensome tax levy. I've gave you all the tax levies throughout the county, and you can see what they are in the information that you've got. The project that we've proposed is being funded primarily 75% or 70% of the project with funds that don't come from the tax levy. They come out of the Beach Nurishment Fund. The remaining 30% of the cost is paid from the taxes on the two service districts. And when you look at those taxes against the other proposed tax levies, at the time they were entered, they're in line with that. So what you're offering and what you're proposing is in line with what's been done in other places. You have that information in front of you. And again, over 70% of the project's being funded with money that doesn't come from the district. So it's not unreasonable, and it is economically feasible using the numbers that we've looked at. And then finally, is there a demand for the project? And we've had, as you know, because you've participated in them, multiple meetings over the last year or more with people residing in the districts who have requested a beach erosion control project. And they've requested it for the various reasons that I said out above. All of those reasons have come up in those discussions. I'm sure that you've also received emails and telephone calls along those same lines. We had a public hearing when we first began talking about this, and we had pretty good participation in that virtual public hearing. And, you know, it became clear through those public hearings that most people understood the need. While they may or may not have liked the tax split, there weren't many that didn't think that there was a need for the project. So, you know, and again, you have received multiple emails, and you've received, I'm sure, multiple phone calls, as I've had, that support the project. So there is a public demand for the project there, and there's a public need. And so the four criteria that you have to find have been met. With that said, you know, I'll stop. That is the next step in what we have to do. Assuming that you find those criteria, then, as we go back and look, I will then prepare a report that'll talk about the proposed districts. It'll give the boundary lines, and that's got to be open for public inspection for four weeks. So as soon as we can get that together, we'll get that out and then make it available for the public, and we won't be able to do anything else for four weeks. We've got to conduct a public hearing before you can adopt the service district. And we have to do that after we've mailed a notice of the public hearing to everybody in the district. And that mailing has, got to have a map, and it's got to have a report, and it's got to have the information that, we'll put in all that, and it goes in that mailing to all of those people. And then after that public hearing, you would adopt the public, you would adopt the service district, and if you set the rate, it would be set for the upcoming fiscal year. And so that's our process. So we're at the place now where you need, you've considered over time those five factors that I talked to earlier, and now you've got to go back and make the findings of need impossible or impractical to provide it in other areas, that it's economically feasible, and that there is a demand for the service. And so with that, I'll open for any questions that you might have, or any thoughts that you might have regarding any of those issues.
Okay. Any questions, Kenny Man?
No, sir.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to move forward?
If you'd make a motion to find, there's a, I'll list them, and you can say, so that find that there's a demonstrable need for providing one or more of the services listed in NCGS 153A-301, that being the Avon Beach Erosion Control and Flood and Hurricane Protection Works Project. That it's impossible or impractical to provide these services on a countywide basis. That it's economically feasible to provide the proposed beach erosion control and flood and hurricane protection work services in the districts without an unreasonable or burdensome annual tax levy. And that there's a demonstrable demand for the proposed services by persons residing in the district.
You took the words right out of my mouth. So moved.
Thank you on that.
All right. Did I hear a second about the vice chair and Commissioner Couch? Oh, Couch, Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
All right. Give me a second to get reorganized here.
No problem. Item seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This brings us to item seven on the agenda, and this is a proclamation for the Week of the Young Child. And what we're going to have is a proclamation celebrating our youngest learners proclaiming April 10th through 16th, 2021, Week of the Young Child. And I believe we have a video for this.
Whereas Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children and the Oklahoma Association for the Education of Young Children, is celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 10th through 16th, 2021.
Whereas, working to promote and ensure high-quality early learning opportunities for all children during the first years of life, when the most rapid brain development occurs, lays the foundation for all future learning. And...
Whereas recognizing, appreciating, and supporting early childhood educators who make a difference to the lives of young children leads to high-quality early childhood experiences for Dare County's youngest citizens and...
Whereas connecting parents and families with resources and information enhances the healthy development of Dare County's young children and...
Whereas, public policies and partnerships that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures and to the prosperity of our local community and larger society.
We, as the board and staff of Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County, request that the Dare County Board of Commissioners proclaim April 10th through 16th, 2021, as the Week of the Young Child in Dare County, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize needs and support the health and development of every young child in Dare County.
Man, they're good. All right. Guess you didn't have to read it this time, did you, County Manager?
I do have something to read.
That's right.
If you all want to act first, then I'll read.
Right. Pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
Mr. Chairman? There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch, seconded by Vice Chairman Urban. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
This is a letter from the Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County that they've asked me to share. It says, Dear County Board of Commissioners, Children and Youth Partnership and the Early Childhood Education Committee would like to thank you for providing financial support to Dare County licensed childcare programs through the Early Childhood Education and Childcare Assistance Grant. We are grateful for your investment in supporting the local childcare programs throughout the pandemic, and in recognizing the key role they are playing in support of essential workers during the COVID-19 crisis. Our childcare system was at risk of collapse due to the economic impact of the pandemic. Many childcare programs were forced to close for a period of time, and while most have since reopened, they have been operating with decreased enrollment and increased instability. The early childhood educators are essential heroes throughout the pandemic despite the risks involved. Childcare businesses have continued to serve the children of Dare County working families. Today, we applaud the commitment the Dare County Board of Commissioners have made by assisting the childcare programs in sustaining operations. This financial support will allow them to continue to provide critical services throughout the next several months as our county begins to recover from the pandemic, as well as strengthen their programs for the future. Through this grant, many programs have been able to remain open and staff, ensuring that families have a safe place for their child as they go to work. This support is a huge step in helping Dare County families through these difficult times. In honor of the Week of the Young Child, we want to thank you for recognizing, appreciating, and supporting the early childhood workforce who make a difference in the lives of young children, which leads to high-quality early childhood experiences for the Dare County's youngest citizens. Thank you very much. Sarah Sampson, Executive Director, Children and Youth Partnership, and Bonnie Brumbler, Early Care and Childhood Manager, the Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County. That would lead us to item number eight. Item number eight is a proclamation for childhood prevention, or for, I'm sorry, for Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I'll read that proclamation, if you'd like, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Please, Kenny Man.
Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and the quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets. And whereas all children deserve to have safe, stable nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. Whereas child abuse and neglect is community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community. Whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting, and child development and resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure all children will grow to their full potential. Whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, we, the Dare County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Dare County, and call upon all citizens to increase their participation in our efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live this seventh day of April 2021.
So moved. Second. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House that's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman to approve. Is any further comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, item number nine is a road request. It's a road request for the Windoverways Phase 1 and 2 subdivisions in Salvo. Required resolution is attack. This is to, again, add it to a DOT highway. We've done these in pass, and we've routinely passed them. In fact, we've routinely passed them. I'm going to ask you in the future, would you just rather me put these on the consent agenda? Because I don't think we've ever denied one. So if you decline to go forward, if you approve this, and if you'll give me guidance for the future, I'll put it in the right place on the agenda.
Move to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve by the vice chair and seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion?
Any further discussion?
Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And would you rather have these on the agenda, or do you want to approve them like this each time?
What's the pleasure of the board?
Consent agenda.
I agree.
Okay, consent.
All right, which brings us to the good segue, brings us to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of amendments, you have an amendment to the grant project ordinance for the coronavirus relief fund, you have a juvenile crime prevention council, Dare County Funding Plan for Fiscal Year 2021-22, you have the transportation program, an additional grant award, and a change of reform from NC DOT CARES Act Round Three, and you have a Dare County Tourism Board request consent expenditures from the short-term restricted fund line, item 5160.
Move to approve.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda is presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next, you have your upcoming board appointments, or your board appointments. You have, first, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Todd Henneche, former director of the YMCA, has transferred, and Jamie Cuck, coach, I'm not sure how you pronounce it, is the new director of the YMCA. The council recommends that Jamie to serve in the remaining term, which expires in October.
Move to approve Jamie Cuck.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve Jamie Couch. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And your upcoming board and committee appointments. In May, you have the Extraterritorial Jurisdiction ETAG for the Town and Ag Head, one term expiring. You have the Veterans Advisory Council with two terms expiring, and you have the Zoning Board of Adjustment for one term expiring. In June, you have the College Abbot Memorial Board of Trustees with one term expiring. You have the Extraterritorial Jurisdiction District for the Town and Southern Shores with one term expiring. You have the Hatters Community Center Board with three terms expiring. You have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with 16 terms expiring. You have the Land Transfer Tax Appeals Board with three terms expiring. The Library Board for Dare County with two terms expiring. The Mans Harbor Community Center Board, three terms expiring. The Run Oak Island Community Center Board, four terms expiring. The Rodanthie Way Salvo Community Center Board, two terms expiring. The Transportation Advisory Board, one term expiring. And the Waterways Commission, three terms expiring. And then in July, you have the East Lake Community Center Board with one term expiring. The Game and Wildlife Commission with four terms expiring.
Wow.
The Parks and Recreation Advisory Council with nine terms expiring. And the Wanches Community Center Board with five terms expiring. And that, Mr. Chairman, would be your agenda.
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to item 12, Commissioner Business and Manager and Attorney Business. Commissioner House, do you mind kicking it off today?
Sure. As we all know, there's been a lot of bills and actions going on in, up in Raleigh. A few of the bills that pertains to the fishing industry have, some have changed, some have moved forward. House Bill 181, Wildlife Resources Commission Amendments, favorable report by the Wildlife Resources Committee on 3/23, and favorable report from the Marine Resources Committee on 3/30. And that was after deleting a section on proclamation authority, and it has now moved on to the House Finance Committee. There's been nothing new on the increasing meat production and capacity. And there's a Senate Bill 279, regulate navigable waters, favorable report from Senate Agriculture Committee on 3/30, and it's now on the Rules Committee, and it's on the calendar to be on the Senate floor. Earlier this, 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 this week, Claverty Fisheries Study was also one, is, is on the Senate floor at this time. Marine Fisheries Reform, Senate Bill 317, a favorable report from the PCS by Senate Ag Committee on 3/30, and has been sent to the Rules Committee and is now on the Senate floor as well. Some of the other fishing bills that are out there are still kind of stuck in committee with no reports on them as well. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. The Kobyia Fishing has opened up, and some, a few regulations have changed there. I do want to say if anybody needs those information, please go to Marine Fisheries, and they have it on there. It's kind of a, they did loosen up, loosen it up a little bit as far as what you can take, but it is kind of confusing. So if you would, please go to that website and actually read through it and make sure you're well familiar with it. On our day in history, I've got a couple things. One, as you know, this past weekend, we celebrated Easter. And as of there is no consensus regarding the exact date of the crucifixion of Jesus, although it is generally agreed by biblical scholars that it was on a Friday near Passover during the governmentship of Pontius Pilate, who ruled from 26 to 36. Various approaches have been used to estimate the year of the crucifixion, including the Gospels and across the chronological life of Paul as well, and different astronomical models. Scholars have provided estimates in the range of year 30 and 33, with Rainier Reschner stating that the 14th of Nassim, April 7th, in the year 30, is apparently, in the opinion of the majority of the contemporary scholars, as well as far and away the most likely date of the crucifixion of Jesus. On a more lighter note, in the day of history, I'm thinking, we've all heard it, we've seen it, we've actually witnessed it here today, small little thing called the internet. On April 7th, 1969, a birth of that thing we call the internet. In 1969, the publication of the first request for comments, the RFC documents paved the way for the birth of the internet on April 7th. It is also cited as a symbolic birth date of the net because RFC memorandum contains research proposals, methodologies, and applications to internet technology, and RFC documents provide the way for the engineering. And we all remember when the internet first came out, you always had to type WWW dot whatever, and that was World Wide Web. The World Wide Web was open to the public on January 1st, 1983. So from 69 to 83, it took them that long to perfect the internet. Usually, in our nighttime meetings, I end on a positive note with our pet of the week. I chose to do the pet of the week today as well because this is a very special case. As you know, we've just visited the SPCA, had a wonderful time there, great facility. But I want to introduce you to Warren, a five-year-old puppy.
Our pet of the week for this week is Warren. We lovingly refer to him as our velvet hippo, as he is just a big...
I remember him.
This handsome fellow is about five years old and has had a rough start in life. He was brought to a local vet office with a serious gunshot wound. While they were able to save his life, they did however have to amputate Warren's leg. After surgery, we took him here to the shelter and have watched Warren get healthy and begin to trust people again. He's looking for an experienced home as the only animal in older kids...
He missing a beat, dude.
He does love playing with his toys and going for car rides. Being a tripod does not slow this boy down at all. To adopt Warren or foster one of our other animals, you can come visit us Monday through Saturday at our shelter located in Mantio. For more information, visit our website at www.obxspca.org or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
So if you have a spot in your home and a place in your heart, Warren is ready. Take him home. Thank you.
He didn't miss a beat, did he?
No.
No. I couldn't believe how strong he was.
I know.
And did you see how smooth his fur was or whatever, where they amputated legs? It was like it never, never was a leg there. I mean, somebody did pretty dang good surgery on that dog. So it's pretty incredible. Going back to your internet thing, Commissioner, you remember when everything was supposed to crash in 2000?
Yeah.
When, when the world was coming to an end, when the internet, y'all remember that?
Yeah.
Just thought I'd bring that up.
I had a, we had an old computer at the fire station and one that was not protected for it, and we wanted to see if it was a myth or not, and I was working that night. So we plugged it in, got it, got it up and running, and sure enough, 12:30, it died.
About that. All right, Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, just would like to say thank you to all of our service pin recipients, Laura, Maggie, and Charlotte, representing 70 years of total service at Dare County. As always, we, we thank them for their, for their work and service to the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bateman?
Yep, just some small stuff here. Recovery Court, it's working, doing what it's supposed to. We've got about 18 participants. We've had some really great success stories in graduates, and so I'm moving right along. Everybody's doing good, so we're, we're happy with that. Just want to give a shout out for the Coastal Federation for picking up the highway. They were, you know, they did interior in Wanches, did that one, one week, and next week their long bypass was pretty cold that morning, and when I went by, there was one lady, she was out there up to her knees in the marsh, and I explained to her that we probably had some critters running around, and she got out of there pretty quick. But anyway, so, but, but thank you for them for all their efforts and so forth, and keeping stuff clean. Bill Walker passed away, you know?
Yes.
Everybody knew Bill, and he's a super nice guy. I've had fond memories of him and Babe Ruth, he was a giver, y'all, you know? And anybody's ever worked, as Bobby has, with nine to 14-year-old kids, and he was always out there smiling, always encouragement for the ones who were continuously striking out all the time or whatever, you know? And for the ones that needed some guidance, you know? He was always there for them and was a giver, and I'm going to miss the guy, just a super nice individual, and sorry to see him pass. So, you know, last year this time, folks, we were in, business-wise, we were in this place where nobody wants to go. We didn't know what was going to happen for the summer. We just received, I had my employee meeting on the 19th of March where we got news from the governor and everyone that we were going to shut down. Nobody could open up. And then all of a sudden, this year or a year later, we're completely different, y'all. I mean, we have business. We have no employees. I was, when I said Mary Helen wanted to come out, back and wait in tables again, but it's, it's rough. But we got business, and that's a good thing, you know? And speaking of that, the tourist bureau, the numbers from the tourist bureau are really looking good. So we're very fortunate in all these things. Shout out to the EMS for running the Dare to Skier race, and virtually, and they did a great job there. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. You talk about there here. Saturday, I went by Wright Memorial. In all my years, I have never, ever seen that place packed. There wasn't a parking place anywhere at Wright Memorial Saturday. It was unbelievable.
Especially this early in the year.
Yeah. I mean, I have never seen it that packed before. It was incredible.
So this is the deal, I've got numbers that go back to 1996, and I pulled, I went back and pulled the years when Easter was early, and every year I pulled, we were up above those years. And some of those, like, you know, 2008 to 2000, I'm at 2005 to 2008, you were just clicking the numbers every year, you were up, 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 up. Even in those years, we were just killing it in comparison to them. And I also looked at employee labor-wise, because I have a labor report, and I've read all these numbers down. I might not look like it, I'm a numbers guy, and I had a lot more labor then. I mean, I was running, you know, eight to 10 waitresses, and last night I ran six and did the double the numbers I did in 2018, which is crazy.
So we're, the county, the county's still not getting J1 students this year, right?
Well, you know, we had some that were going to come from Bulgaria, and Bulgaria shut down. And so now we're looking at Turkey, hopefully we're getting some from there, but I called the guy yesterday and then we emailed him, and he doesn't know yet. So, and, and we're out there scrambling.
Right.
So I'm looking for any high school kid who wants a good job, you know, wants to learn the trade.
I'm in the same boat. Everybody is, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's everywhere.
And, and on top of that, nationally, and I'm not sure who put it out, because my neighbor spoke to me last night when I came home from work, he said the Outer Banks is listed as the number three hotspot to travel to in all of the United States this coming year.
Yeah, I was going to say that in my comments, and it's actually the Yahoo search.
Oh, is that who it is?
The Yahoo search, and Yellowstone was number one, and we're actually tied for number two.
Oh, my God.
With Disney World.
Oh, my God.
So buckle up.
Wow. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Couch?
Yes, sir. Good morning, everyone. And the agenda item says Commissioner's business, but if you'll indulge me, I'll just have some personal as well. First off, as Irvin said, I mean, Bill Walker, what a stand-up, great guy, somebody good to be around. I mean, he was a public servant, excuse me, but it's just good to be around people like that. I really feel for Stephanie and his children, and, and we're all there for him. A good thing about the Outer Banks in our community here is we rally around our own. Also, want to kind of follow, follow up with, Wally's, our vice chairman's very good about recognizing the county employees, and our guys are just really, really good. I know it sounds like a soundbite, I remember in all my years here on the Outer Banks that whenever I would hear that about, I knew that it was true about our county employees, but having experienced it now, well into my second term here, having these interactions with our staff, management and staff, they are, they're just exceptional. And the three that we've got here, Laura over at the Ag Head Environmental Health, she's just, she's, she's tops. I mean, she's very, all three, Maggie, Charlotte, and Laura Geiser, the three of them are as service-oriented as we're going to get. That was just to have those three to be recognized and a little bit, I hope the environmental health can continue, can have that continuity with whoever that position segues into here in June, and I'm sure it will be if she has any hand in whoever takes that position. Secondly, I just, when I say personal, I just am really sad that the OBX Safer Spot Campaign devolved into what it did with the drama. It was an innocuous thing, it was a upbeat kind of thing, and, but it just, it's kind of descriptive of what goes on in society today. And now that it has been canceled, my phone has emails and some calls here about, you know, how they regret and actually some anger on such a good-hearted thing fell victim to, to that kind of drama. But it is what it is, and I just want to salute Health and Human Services and also the Chamber for what was a good faith, well-intentioned effort, and thank you for that. Lastly, excuse me again, I don't know how many of you knew, and I'm sure you did, you've crossed paths with Ms. Libby Midget down in Hatters. She was the matriarch of Midget Realty, that's probably an apt description, but she was purveyor of such great stories. She had quite a pedigree going there with her own heritage, but the last time I talked to her, she was going... her own heritage. But the last time I talked to her, she was going back to some of her memories of some of the old, who were old timers back then, and she could cover, just based with her outstanding memory of going back to her childhood days on people who were a couple of three generations ahead of her, and then to segue right into the fact that she kept up with all the, she knew about the social media. She had grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and was right there with them. They say that age is timeless and that your youth, your youth and your spirit are still there regardless of what your age is. And she was just the poster child for that. Great, yes, it's sad, we're not going to have access to her and her spirit of, of just a great spirit of somebody to be around, uplifting spirit. And that's, thank you. That's, that's what I was looking for. And, but at the same time, really, she was missing stocky, something awful. Her family was there with her when she passed, and just what a great, what a great lady the Outer Banks she was. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's, that's today.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner Couch. Commissioner Tobin?
Thank you, Commissioner. I had dinner last night with a couple that are non-resident property owners from Greensboro, and they said that they had been trying and trying and trying to get vaccinated. They're both 65 and over in Greensboro, and they were not able to get vaccinated up there. They came down here, signed up, and they both received their vaccinations, and they told me that it was the most efficient government operation that they had ever been through, and to thank the people who were in charge of it. So I personally went and thanked Sheila this morning, but I'd like to publicly thank all the people that are involved in that, all the emergency management people, the Dare County Sheriff's Department. There's a lot of nurses that are volunteering, that are coming and giving the injections, and I think it's really, really, really something that our county is doing above and beyond almost anywhere else in the United States. We're down to only about 800, I believe it was 886 people that are on the waiting list to get an appointment, which is absolutely phenomenal. Next, I'd like to, I did, I was not able to make the Zoom meeting this week on the dredge project. I was in another meeting, but I did get an update on it, and it was a milestone week. On Monday, they started actually welding pieces together. It's more framework than the hull, and it'll, they'll be working on framework for about three or four weeks, and then they start bringing the plating of the hull together for the midsection of the dredge. So a pretty big deal. And on a, kind of a personal note for me, one of my friends at the marina has been in the hospital for two months with COVID. He's been on a ventilator, he was on a ventilator for 30, about 30 days, and he, they didn't think he was going to make it, but he had, they had to give him a tracheotomy because he was rejecting the ventilator tube, and they put the ventilator tube through the tracheotomy. And I'd been watching after his boat, and when I talked to his son this past week, his son said that they had taken the ventilator out, and they were getting ready to take his tracheotomy out, and that, and he goes, oh, I'm getting a phone call from him right now. Well, I talked to him the next, within that hour, I talked to him. He'd walked 100 yards that day, and he's in total recovery.
Wow.
So miracles do happen.
Yeah, thank heaven.
It's unbelievable he was on it. Anyway, keep saying prayers out to everybody who's got illnesses.
Amen.
They work.
Yeah. Good news.
That's all I've got.
That's great to hear that, Jim. Down the road, you know, when you're talking to your guys down there in the shipyard and everything, is it possible to see if we can make, get a couple of photos or something you might want?
I have photos.
Okay.
Yeah, they just actually, I texted Jordan to see if they'd released any more photos than I do, so.
Oh, cool. Well, maybe, you know, down the road, we can get them to Matt and we'll take a look.
We'll, we'll do that. I was, I was hoping I could do it today, but being that the thing was yesterday, it's kind of a tight schedule, but.
Good deal.
Especially when they lay the queue. I want to.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, that brings us to County Manager Attorney's Business.
Yes, sir. A couple things. I want to reach out to Bill Walker's family. If you had a kid playing baseball back in the late 80s, Bill Walker touched his life. From four years old to 14-year-old, he was the face of Babe Ruth Baseball on the beach. And Irvin and I have kids the same age, and so we've experienced that firsthand, spent lots of time with him, and golly, he's going to be sorely missed. He was just one of the good guys, and so I do want to reach out to his family as well. More business-related, I had met with the Board of Elections last week, I think it was, and a year ago, I think, at budget time, we approved their stipend for their pay, and they're satisfied with that stipend. But over the year, we have applied a policy to them that we apply to most of our boards, that you, you have to attend the meetings to get our stipend. Well, their stipend's paid monthly. It's not really paid by the meeting. And so we just deducted $25 if somebody didn't show up for the meeting. But they have lots of meetings that are outside of their meetings that they have formally with various things. And so they've asked us to change the policy, at least for them, so that there is no deduction, so they just get their monthly stipend. They don't have, we have that in place for attendance reasons, and we don't have attendance problems there. The meetings they've missed is because somebody's been sick, and they go to multiple more meetings than just the monthly meeting that they're required to be paid for. So no problem for us. The amount of money is very, very small, but it is our policy, so I wanted to modify, get you all to approve modifying that policy for them.
Please, the board.
I have no problem.
Yeah, I'll motion.
Do, do you need a motion?
Do you need a motion?
I do.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Bateman, seconded by Commissioner Tobin in the House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
And then the last thing's a good note. Usually this time of year, we come to you and talk to you about health insurance because we have to approve the health insurance plan along about this time so we can get it in the budget and all that. The good news is our health insurance is, pardon my pun, is healthy. We've done very well this year, and there is no increase in it. So we, our, our fund is solid, reserves is solid, and there's no need for any increase, and so there's no action for you to take, and that's a good thing. So everything's fallen in place there, too, and we're, we're proud of that work, and proud of the work Dave and his team, and Elizabeth and her team have done with our wellness plans and all that to keep those rates low. So no changes there. That's all that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Good deal. Thank you, County Manager. Public information offer, Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us today?
No, sir.
Our Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, do you have anything for us?
Just real quickly, the, on COA and the Professional Arts Build, and I think we'll hopefully maybe have a resolution this week from Boomerang Design and Barn Hill Construction. They've got some proposals to get to us by the end of the week, and then we'll bring that to you. And then we're on schedule for budget, and capital CIP will, will be in good shape with this, with the schedule. That won't be any problem.
Super. Good deal. Good stuff. Thank you, Dave. Okay, that brings us to the end of the meetings. There are motion to adjourn until 5:00 PM on April the 19th.
So moved.
Okay, it's a motion by Commissioner House, seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.